Thank you, everybody, and welcome to the May 20th Open Session. Madam Clerk, can we have a call to order? And as we will have Councilmember Boyle's joining, we will have to do every vote by roll call.
Okay, dokey. So, Councilmember Keldorf, Councilmember Giroux.
Here.
Councilmember Boyle's.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Baldino.
Present.
And Mayor Pimentel.
Here. And Pastor Elmore. There we go. From the Bridge, if you leave us in the invocation, Mayor Pro Tem Baldino will follow with a pledge. If you'll all please rise.
Just like to thank you all again for allowing us to serve our community this way. I'm the youth pastor over at Bridge South Bay, and it's just great to be here. Thank you. I'll open us in prayer. Lord, thank you for these council members. Thank you for our community, God. Lord, I just lift up this council tonight as they make decisions, as they talk about crucial issues, that you would give them wisdom, give them clarity to tackle these problems and to lead our community here. Lord, I lift up our first responders, our firefighters, policemen, our teachers, the kids in our schools, God. We are so passionate about the next generation of students here in El Segundo. I pray that you continue to guide them, shape them, and lead them forward as they grow up to be adults and lead the next generation. We thank you for leading us, God, and we give you our time tonight. Amen.
All right, hand on your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Elmore, and thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We have one special presentation tonight. Councilmember Giroux.
All right. Proclamation, City of El Segundo, California, whereas the City of El Segundo cherishes the value and dignity of each person and recognizes and appreciates the importance of and respect equality and freedom. And whereas all welcomed in the City of El Segundo to live, work, and play, and every individual and family deserves a place to call home where they are safe, happy, and supported by friends, neighbors, and community leaders. And whereas the City of El Segundo denounces prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, gender identity, gender expression, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical attributes as an affront to our fundamental principles. And whereas the LGBTQ+ community has worked tirelessly for respect and equality and continues to celebrate authenticity, acceptance, and love. And whereas Pride Month began in June of 1969 on the one-year anniversary of the Stonewall uprising in New York City after LGBTQ+ and allied friends rose up and fought against harassment and discriminatory laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas the City of El Segundo celebrates and appreciates the cultural, civic, and economic contributions of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, plus, LGBTQ+ community, which strengthens our social welfare. And whereas it is imperative that people in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers and community leaders. Now, therefore, on this 20th day of May 2025, the mayor and the members of the City Council of City of El Segundo, California hereby proclaim June 25th as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in El Segundo and encourage all residents to celebrate the progress toward justice, equality, and liberty in the LGBTQ+ community and join us in the fights that remain to be won. The City Council, the City of El Segundo, further calls upon residents and employees of El Segundo to observe June 2025 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in honor of our LGBTQ+ residents, employees, and visitors and to the contributions they continue to make to our community. And I believe to accept this proclamation is Ali Mancini.
Honorable Mayor Pimentel, Mayor Pro Tem Baldino, and members of the City Council, I'd like to thank the City Council for declaring the month of June 2025 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month for the City of El Segundo. As an openly gay member of the city's staff team, I cannot express to you how meaningful it is to be acknowledged in this forum. In doing so, this council pays tribute to the incredibly brave efforts of so many who paved the pathway for me to be standing here before you this evening, accepting this proclamation. I remember knowing as a very little girl that I was different, and entering the teen years and desperately wanting to fit in brought even more of a realization that I was not like everyone else. And when you're 14 years old, there is really nothing more important than wanting to fit in. As I got older, secrecy became a way of life for me. I just got used to hiding who I was for fear that if anyone saw or knew the real me, I'd be ridiculed, laughed at, or worse, left on the sidelines. So instead, I abandoned my true self, and I got used to hiding who I was for many, many years, until I reached my mid-20s, when I started meeting other people like me. It took finding that community and standing amongst others with similar stories to feel brave enough to live my truth. And this is exactly why these types of acknowledgements are so critical, because these acknowledgements say to people like me, you are okay, you are welcome here, you are safe, and you are not alone. Thank you very much for this proclamation and for the honor of receiving it on behalf of all of those in the LGBTQ+ community and all of the allies who stand alongside us every day. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have anybody here for public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We have two people who would like to address you, both of whom will be addressing things that are on tonight's agenda, so...
Five minutes each.
Great.
Come on down.
I would like to invite Ray Beckett, please, to come up.
My name is Ray Beckett. I'm a 12-year resident and homeowner, talking about a topic agenda number four today. That's the single-family residential standards, the urban lot splits, and the two-unit development pursuant to Senate Bill 450. Dear City Council members, I feel compelled to speak in defense of the single-family home where the Sacramento Legislature SB 9 and SB 40 seem to have the sole purpose as its destruction. Here are some related facts to consider. I reference California Senate Bill 9. If not for rejection by the Los Angeles judge, SB 9 would have rezoned every R1 single-family home in El Segundo and statewide. Clearly, Sacramento does not value the single-family home. Why is this the case? Per lot size, square foot, multi-unit housing is more expensive and profitable for developers than developing the single-family home. In September 2024, an LA real estate developer was accused of 444 violation of campaign funding laws. According to the California Housing Partnership, developers are making millions from "affordable housing programs," lobbying California lawmakers to shut down regulations. The expenditures represent a fraction of the $32 million the California real estate industry as a whole spent on lobbying the state legislature and the executive branch in the last three years. Wrecked number of residents are leaving this state. Why pay a premium price for a single-family home when Sacramento will just rezone it out of existence? The City of Los Angeles Zoning Commission recently recommended to leave 72% of the city zoned as single-family homes. Per Google AI, in El Segundo, the land zoned as R1, which primarily allows single-family dwellings, covers only 16% of the city. Regarding affordability, today, for just over $400,000, a moderate single-family home can be purchased in Clovis, California, great schools, excellent police and fire, and a view of the Sierras. California has affordable housing now. This housing split is slated to create housing without stating what will be destroyed. The single-family home on the lot will be destroyed once split into two lots. The destruction is also to open space and likely removal of healthy, mature trees. These single-family homes will never be reconstituted once split into R2s. They will be gone forever by your decision. In the last 12 years I've lived in El Segundo, by all measurements, the quality of life for residents is lower now, and the costs are higher for city services, water, trash, and city fees. The city's car population appears to have greatly exceeded the number of residents, and parking on many residential streets have zero availability for overnight parking. Some recommendations: Add sufficient fees for purchase of the equivalent lost open space at market value to be provided to city parks and recreation. Set conditions to limit removal of any mature trees. Set conditions in a square-foot formula that no added-street parking demand shall be permitted from the current R1 state. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
I would like to invite Andrea Hume, please.
Hello. Thank you, guys, for what you do. Appreciate it very much. I wanted to just touch on the update on the Preferential Parking Zone 3 Pilot Program, which was instituted a year ago. I've lived on Illinois Court for 12 years here in El Segundo, and the permit zone basically surrounds the whole court but doesn't include the court. And on Illinois Court, I'm not sure how much you guys know about this. There's, at my count, 56 units or residences, and in the court, there's seven parking spots, one of which is handicapped, and one of which has a classic car that's parked there 24/7, literally, every single week. But I understand the need for the permit because there are a lot of overnight parking, and also people dump their cars there when they go to the airport and just take an Uber or something to LAX and leave their car there for a week. And I know it was a big problem for the surrounding areas, but it's also a problem on Illinois Court. Just last weekend, there was a car there for four days that was airport parking over Mother's Day weekend. There's three cars that were parked this past week. From last Tuesday to this morning, they left before the street sweeping came. So I'm not sure why Illinois Court was excluded from that permit parking zone because we have the same problem with people parking there that aren't residents. I know there's a lot of units there, and there are a lot of renters. I know there's crash pads for the airline industry people. But I've lived there for over 12 years in a three-bedroom apartment, and I do have a space in the driveway, and I share a garage. But I also have two daughters that drive. And so when one of us is parked in the spot that's in front of the garage, the other, one of my daughters or myself, has to park... It's quite far away now, and it's on the other side of Freedom Park, which is not lit. And if one of us is coming home late, there's a danger. My younger daughter, who's 17, goes to El Segundo High School, has had two times where she's come home in tears because she has felt unsafe because people have either talked to her or tried to engage with her, and at one point, she thought they were following her. So it's not only an inconvenience, to me, it's a safety issue. So I don't know how difficult it would be to include Illinois Court in that parking permit. It may be easier to just allow certain residents or anybody who feels that they really need the extra parking to apply for a parking permit, you know, with proof of residence, to be able to park in the preferred zone. Because when I park where I'm allowed to park, which is essentially on the other side of Freedom Park and sometimes down the next block on a street that runs parallel to Mariposa, I will count, on average, eight to 10 open parking spots that I can't park in that are literally perpendicular to the end of the court, which are like 100 feet away from my residence, but I have to walk on the other side of the park to park in a place where I'm allowed to park as a resident. So I don't know why it was omitted from there or if there's a way to fix it, but I would be super grateful if there was a way we could either get permits to park near to our house because the program seems to be working great. There's open spots all over the place. The only trouble is that I'm and my daughters and my neighbors aren't allowed to park there, and it's created quite a tense parking situation, jockeying for those few spots that are available. So I really appreciate your time, and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Ms. Hume.
Yeah.
Madam Clerk, anybody else?
No, sir, that's it.
Council comments?
Mr. Beckett, thank you for coming in, speaking. When Sacramento passes a law like SB 9, we are mandated to adopt it into our code. We have, just last meeting, I brought a series of housing bills I thought were wrong, that we have agreed to send letters to Sacramento opposing the slow but inevitable destruction of the local authority being able to plan their cities. I encourage you to go talk to Senator Ben Allen. He is our state representative. He has the ability to vote no on these terrible bills that we think are not good. His office is at 111 Penn Street in El Segundo. His suite number is 101. I've been there myself to ask him about these bills and what can be done, and I invite everyone in town who has the same questions I do to do the same. But thank you for your time.
We can't have a conversation because the public communication is over, okay? And with respect to parking, we're going to talk about that later. Thank you for coming. Any other council comments? To piggyback on the Mayor Pro Tem's comments, the biggest offenders from Sacramento are term-limited out shortly, so hopefully the onslaught of assault on our local control will diminish somewhat. City Manager, any comments from you?
Nothing additional. I think the Mayor Pro Tem was very articulate, and like you had said, item number 15 will be discussed on the agenda.
We're handing out compliments.
Still early.
Look at that, articulate. Been promoted. All right, I will entertain a procedural motion to read all ordinance and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
Giroux on the first.
Baldino seconds.
We'll have a roll call vote.
Sorry. Councilmember Keldorf?
Yes.
Councilmember Giroux?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyle's?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Baldino?
Yes.
And Mayor Pimentel?
Yes. Passes 5-0. Consent counter. Does anyone have any polls?
I just want to briefly poll number 11.
We'll poll number 11, and we will poll number 8. Anything further? I will take a motion to pass items 2 through 7, and 9 and 10.
So moved.
That's Baldino on the first.
I'll second.
Keldorf on the second.
Okay. Councilmember Keldorf?
Yes.
What? I'm sorry.
No, you're right.
I thought I was getting a signal. Councilmember Giroux?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyle's?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Baldino?
Yes.
And Mayor Pimentel?
Yes. All right. Item I, this is a notice of completion for the fiscal year 2425 Pavement Rehab Project Number PW 2408. I pull this not to dispute it, but I want to highlight one small area of concern that Public Works is attuned to. On the west side of the alley at the frontage, when it rains, there's significant ponding that occurs. Previously, that's because in the resurfacing effort, we had to remove a cement dike down there. We reinstalled one, but there is an area of pooling that exists on the private property. So we may come subsequently to see if there's sufficient pooling later in the year. We may revisit it to add a catch basin to that. But this is largely read in for the people at home. But the contractor on Public Works revisited this thing twice. The area of deficiency is on private property, which posed a little bit of problem. It's just an elevation change area that does add a degree of pooling that, at times of heavy precipitation, can cause a pond. So I pull this only to let those watching at home know, we know there's an issue. We've been trying to fix the issue, and if the issue persists, if our remediations do not solve the issue, we may approach that property owner to see if we can add a catch basin and about, what do you think it is, lies five and a half feet of pipe to connect it to the service, something like that, you can pace it off. But it's only an issue, depending on your vehicle traffic, if it rains significantly. So that's why I want to pull item 8, not to contest it being done. So with that said, I will move approval of item 8, Notice of Completion for the Fiscal Year 2425, unless there's other comments on it. Councilmember Boyle's, anything? All set? All right, I will move approval. Pimentel on the first.
Second.
Second from Giroux. A roll call vote.
Roll call of votes. Councilmember Keldorf?
Yes.
Councilmember Giroux?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyle's?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Baldino? And Mayor Pimentel?
Yes. Item passes. Over to you on item 11.
All right, three-year contract with Brightview Landscape Services, Inc. for $575,494 per year to provide landscape maintenance services. So again, I mentioned this last time, so I'm just reiterating it again. What is our process and procedure to make sure that the contract matches what the RFP was? All right, I want to make sure it happens because this caused us some problems before.
Yes.
And is there also in that contract a way to audit what's actually being done? Meaning, you don't just sit there and wait for a problem after six months? Is everything being done according to that contract? Because this is a tankload of money.
Yes.
And we deserve a tankload of service to go along with it.
Yes. Well, these are very good questions. So we are attaching a copy, or you'll see there's attached a copy of the RFP to the agreement. So everything that we asked in the scope of services is included in the agreement. And I actually appreciate the second question because this is one of the reasons we went with Brightview, because we were very, very impressed with their quality control. They actually provide quality site assessment reports weekly to us, which are written reports that sort of highlight not just their day-to-day, but any out-of-the-ordinary issues they addressed with photos. We'll get these every week. There's something that I could easily upload to the department website if we wanted to make those available to the public. But additionally, we're going to be having meetings. I'm going to be meeting, actually, with the manager every month, myself. So it will be myself, my superintendent, and then my two supervisors, so that I'm actually involved in those meetings. And any issues that we have, we can address during that time. And then, of course, if we need to get legal involved, we will. But they've got a lot of really, they've got some things in place that I think will help ensure that their staff are doing what they're supposed to be doing. So, for example, they showed us...
So for example, they showed us like an aerial of Acacia Park. And they're able to identify how much turf is in that area, what, you know, size, you know, how tall we want that grass to grow. And then based on the equipment that they've assigned, how long it should actually take their, their folks to get the grass mowed over there. So they're able to stay on top of making sure that their employees are, you know, spending their time appropriately and not just, oh yes, we've done that, check that off the list, but how much time they're spending out at each park. They actually have a software that they utilize.
And also they are the same group that handles the school district, am I correct on that?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. That's all I wanted to do. I will.
Can I ask a quick question? I noticed in that RFP, they are forbidden from using AI software without our express written permission.
I would have to defer to legal on that.
I mean, I won't belabor this with that question, but it would seem like when you talk about apportioning pieces for maps and map imagery and scheduling and staffing, that that's sort of the thing that AI would be good at. So maybe going forward with the, with the team, that might be something, if they need written approval, I suggest we would not dispute it. Sorry, go ahead.
Right.
Anything else? Everybody good?
No, I'm just going to ask an obvious question. If, once this contract's in effect, someone sees a problem and they use the El Segundo Connect app to report it?
Correct.
That comes to the city and then we're able to notify the contractor?
Correct. That would come to us. It would still go through our superintendent and then we would reach out to the vendor and manage that. But hopefully these monthly meetings, I think, will be a really good, really simple opportunity for us to be bringing up issues as they happen. But they seem to have it really dialed in as far as their own quality control, making sure that their staff are doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Great.
Yes.
Okay, with that, I will motion to approve.
Pimentel, second. Roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry, that was Baldino and Pimentel?
Giroux, Pimentel.
Oh, Giroux, Pimentel, sorry. Councilmember Keldorff?
Yes.
Councilmember Giroux?
Yes.
Councilmember Boiles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baldino?
Yes.
And Mayor Pimentel?
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
Very well. Thank you, Ms. Mancini. All right. Item 12, this is the resolution for procedures and conduct of public hearing for our brand new law, AB 2561. The requirements regarding job vacancies, recruitment, and retention efforts. This is a public hearing and now is the time and place heretofore set for a public hearing. City clerk, for this invaluable piece of legislation, was a proper notice of the hearing given in a timely manner?
Yes.
Has any written communication been received regarding this public hearing?
No written communication has been received.
The public hearing is now open. Ms. Reddick, the floor is yours.
Mayor, if I might just interject. The first item on the agenda for this is to actually adopt the resolution establishing the policies and procedures for the public hearing. And so Ms. Reddick will address that and then the council will vote on adopting those. And then the public hearing will be opened and those policies and procedures will be in effect for that public hearing.
So that I understand is correct. We are not in a public hearing now. First, we are in a policy procedure adoption, then a public hearing.
That's correct.
So we will open for public comment then. Very well. So you'll be presenting on an item. We will vote. You will not read, or will you read? Will you read?
I will read that.
You will read and then we will vote and then we will public here. Very well.
Thank you. Okay, so I will start my PowerPoint presentation, talk about AB 2561. And then when we get to the point about the policies and procedures, I'll stop the slides and then we'll move forward. So AB 2561 is a new law out of Sacramento. It addresses vacancies in local government specifically. So tonight I have a short presentation for you. Going to talk about 2561, what are the findings of the legislature? What are the requirements of this new law? And then we'll talk about policies and procedures for the public hearing. They're very short, it's two pages, and a resolution to adopt those. And then I'll go ahead and give information to the public about the city, how we're structured and our vacancy rates at a certain point in time, snapshot in time. My date for that is the end of April of this year. So what is AB 2561? So the legislature really wanted to address staffing shortages in local government. We hear about those every time you turn the TV on and the impact that staffing shortages have on service deliveries to the public. So this law is only applicable to full-time vacancies. This does not apply to seasonal, part-time vacancies. It's just for full-time. So the three things that the legislature determined was that there's a lot of vacancies in local government and that these vacancies have an impact on service delivery. They have an impact on the employees who have heavier workload and the state is interested in helping address those. So this law requires that we hold an annual public hearing each year prior to the budget of the adoption, prior to the budget adoption. Because if during this hearing, you found that there's something that we could do that might have a cost impact to reduce our vacancy levels, we need to hold it before we adopt the budget. And they also require that we prevent, we present vacancy information. So if a bargaining unit is 20% or greater in vacancies, there's additional information that the bargaining unit can request to be provided. And then we also need to give an opportunity for all of our represented employees to make a presentation at the public hearing. So for that, recommending that we establish protocols for future vacancy hearings, which would ensure a fair, orderly, and efficient process moving forward. We do not have any bargaining units that will be presenting this evening. So this will be our first time, so we'll establish the procedures. And then if we have vacancy rates in 20% or greater of next year, then we will use those when we, when we conduct the public hearing. So the first item is written notice. You have to provide written notice to the bargaining units of the hearing. Give them their vacancy rate. Give them an opportunity to make a presentation at the public hearing. Excuse me. If we are in labor negotiations with any of the groups, they are asked to refrain from making proposals during the public hearing, which were not made at the bargaining table. We are only in negotiations with one group right now at the time. And if there is a 20% vacancy rate, then they can request additional information from the city. Some of that additional information can include like, how many days did it take to fill a position? How many applications did you receive? So the policies and procedures, we are recommending that this would be the order of it and the timeline. The city, likely the HR director, would be making a 10-minute presentation per bargaining unit if, you know, needed. And then the employee organizations or the bargaining units, they each get 10 minutes. Then council discussion and questions, final comments from the city, final comments from the bargaining unit, and then public comments. So with that, I will take a pause here and we will.
I do have a question for you. Under this law, if we have 0% vacancies, we're still required to have these hearings?
Yes, we are.
Of course.
This is our old Assembly District.
And under this law, even if we have 0% vacancies, each bargaining unit has the opportunity to make a presentation regardless.
Okay. The format you have for us, was this based on something else or where did this come from?
This was based on legal counsel's recommendation.
To meet the state law requirements. There you go. All right.
Any further counsel questions? All right.
So with that, a resolution of the City Council of the City of El Segundo, California, adopting policies and procedures for the public hearing under Assembly Bill 2561 is ready for adoption.
Pimentel will move approval.
Second.
Second from Giroux. Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Keldorff?
Yes.
Councilmember Giroux?
Yes.
Councilmember Boiles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baldino?
Yes.
Mayor Pimentel?
Yes. All right, motion passes. Now we're on to sub item 2. Now is the time and place here to four picks for the public hearing. Was a proper notice given?
Yes, sir, it was.
Any written communications?
No, sir, there was not.
Director Reddick, the floor is now yours.
Thank you. So El Segundo has seven full-time employee groups. Six of them are represented and one of them is unrepresented. So the represented groups we have are the City Employees Association. They're actually affiliated with the National Union of ASME. The City Employees Association, the classifications that are in that unit are pretty widespread. We have administrative classifications. We have street workers, water workers, administrative workers. The Firefighters Association, so that would be your firefighter, firefighter paramedic, fire engineer, and fire captain. The Police Managers Association, that is two captains and five lieutenants. The Police Officers Association is police officer and police sergeant. And then the Police Support Services Employees Association, those are generally people that work in the front of the police department. They are people who work with records. They have police service officer and they have police services assistant. Then we have our supervisory group. Those are different levels of analyst positions in different specialties. Those are supervisors, so like accounting supervisor. It's engineering positions, it's planning positions. And then the last one is the unrepresented management confidential. So that includes your department heads, your managers, and your confidential staff, which are mainly in the Human Resources Department. So the vacancy rate is, is very fluid. This is just a snapshot in time. These numbers are based on the current adopted budget from July 1st of last year. And these numbers were generated on April 29th. And as you can see, we have overall 9.1% vacancy rate citywide. So, and you can also see that no unit has 20% or greater. The highest in there is the supervisors group at roughly 18%. And our vacancy rate, when I took these numbers, was 25 full-time vacancies. We have been doing a lot of recruitment. We actually had three full-time employees come to our executive meeting this morning to be introduced. And we have a few more that will be starting in the next pay period. So currently, approximately, we have about 20 full-time vacancies. This number is very fluid because people get promoted and they move from one bargaining unit to another. So for example, in the PSSEA, we now have one vacancy in that unit, but we have one fewer vacancy in the supervisors unit because someone was promoted. So it's constantly fluctuating. The City of El Segundo has really good benefits here. And these are some of the things that attract people to work at the city. Generally speaking, we have been trying to, across the board, across our units, try and standardize some of these things. So we have 12 paid holidays here plus a floating holiday. We have one personal leave day per year. There is one unit who has two personal leave days per year in lieu of the additional holiday. Our vacation leave accrual, with the last round of contracts and also with the update of the administrative code for the management confidential folks, we can attract people as laterals from other cities with CalPERS service because they don't have to start at the bottom of the vacation leave accrual schedule. So if they have 10 years of service, they can be placed right in the 10-year vacation leave accrual for 10 years of service. We also have a very attractive signing bonus. It's voluntary. It's $10,000 voluntary binding arbitration. This is available to employees in the management and confidential unit. It's also available to the firefighters' unit. And the $30,000, that is currently the amount that is provided in the contract to the Police Officers Association. We also have a lateral incentive of up to $40,000. It's paid in increments for lateral police officers that would like to come to El Segundo. We also have something that most cities have phased out over the last couple decades, really, to be honest. And that's a generous retiring medical plan. So the City of El Segundo provides the same retiring medical to actives and to retirees. So currently for all groups, that's $1,800. The exception is that the management and confidential group, which is unrepresented, they get $932 of retiring medical, plus they get a supplement to equal what actives get if they are with the city for at least five years. And then we have employee engagement activities. We actually have an employee engagement committee. The city manager is very involved with the employee engagement, holds town halls. We just had a employee service awards event over at the fire station. So we do have things to attract new workers to the City of El Segundo. The hiring process. So we're constantly trying to find ways that we can pare things down. We can make things clearer, more transparent because we want to hire people and have them be the right fit for them and the right fit for the city and be successful. So with that, we've been revising classification specifications. Lots of them. I don't even have the number. But with that, the, the job descriptions haven't been revised, many of them, in several, several years. And so they need to be updated and clarified so that when someone is hired here, they know what the expectation is of the job and what the job duties are. We've also did a little bit of flexibility in the requirements. So for example, if it requires a bachelor's degree instead of the actual piece of paper bachelor's degree, if you took all the classes but not in the right categories, if you had 120 units, that would suffice. Associate's degree would be 60 units. We also have some of our job descriptions where it's written where you can have five years of experience in a bachelor's degree or you could have seven years of experience in an associate's degree. So at the end, it equals out to be the same level of education and experience combined, but it gives some flexibility into hiring. Maybe someone doesn't have the actual bachelor's degree, but they have a lot of experience in that field. Streamlining of the testing process, we have revised. So with the testing process, when we open a recruitment, you can't just decide, okay, this time, this is what I need. I need a test or I don't need a test. All the recruitments for all the positions have to have a city council-approved exam plan, which outlines what is the testing process for that recruitment. So when we open a recruitment, we have to look at the exam plan. Is this still the right thing that we need for this position? Or is this something that we need to make a little bit of tweaks on? So we have revised some of the exam plans. We've done that in fire most recently. We've also traditionally in local government, when we do interview panels, we like to call on our other outside cities to assemble a panel of three raters to have a unbiased, you know, rating of the candidates coming in and to be placed on the eligible list. And then from there, they are interviewed by department members. But because there is such a shortage right now of good candidates and good candidates get jobs really quickly, we have been more flexible in having internal panels conduct the interviews. It's much faster. It is very difficult to get outside raters because other agencies are short too and they can't, you know, provide another person away from their desk for the whole day. For some of our written exams that are required for certain positions, we've done online testing where the candidates just have a deadline to complete the testing. They do it at their leisure. They can do it online in the middle of the night, whenever they have time to get it done. And then for our police officer testing, we do the written exam and the physical agility testing on the same day, which speeds up the hiring process. And then lastly, we do use NeoGov electronic onboarding for all the pre-employment paperwork packets. And then we also do online testing for, I mean, online training for our required classes. Those would be harassment prevention and workplace violence prevention. So some of the obstacles, and the obstacles, that's actually a word that's used in AB 2561. So obstacles in hiring, it would be, you know, the shrinking labor pool. During COVID, a lot of people who were planning on working longer decided, once COVID came, they decided they didn't want to work anymore. So they retired early. So there's fewer people and that's known as the Great Resignation. The candidates who are out there, they do know that it's a buyer's market and they are really highly sought after. And so with that, we find that a lot of candidates have higher expectations on their salary, the work schedule. A lot of people have hybrid or remote work for like administrative type jobs. And when candidates do get here, they're expecting to progress through the salary steps or through the classification series, maybe at a faster pace than what was traditionally in place before COVID. We are in a lot of competition with public agencies. Some public agencies, you know, ones that we can. Some public agencies, you know, ones that we compete with, Santa Monica, Beverly Hills, Manhattan Beach, they do offer a hybrid and work from home. And this has happened to us multiple times where we've given, Santa Monica as well, we've given candidates offers and the candidate took the offer back to their current employer and negotiated a better title and more money. So they basically were applying at other places, created leverage with their current employer, and they ended up staying with their current employer. Human resources, we have been very low on our staff. So we're working really hard to fill vacancies. And some of that is seasonal part-time and hiring takes a lot of our time. We actually, in the last two weeks, have hired 24 lifeguards. So, and other rec staff, those are part-time, so those don't count towards the AB 2561. And then, like I mentioned earlier, we do a lot of promotional exams and those create vacancies. We just did a fire captain exam, so now we have vacancies at engineer. We did a police records supervisor. Now we have a vacancy at the police services assistant. Those are two that I can think of off the top of my head. So in summary, the AB 2561 is a new law created by Sacramento. It's effective January 1st of this year. It applies only to full-time positions. It requires an annual public hearing before the adoption of the budget each year. We have now adopted policies and procedures if we should have people who are interested from the bargaining units and making presentations for next year. The city of El Segundo has seven employee groups. One of those is the unrepresented. And our vacancy rate overall is 19.9.1. We do not have any bargaining units that are 20% or above. And some of the obstacles in hiring could be the fewer amount of candidates that are actually out there, and their increased expectations for salary, promotional advancement, and also schedule. And we have made a lot of positive strides in our employee engagement efforts. So with that, I'm available for a question?
Do we have anyone here for public comment?
No, sir.
Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Keldor for the first.
Second.
Drew on the second. Matt, I'll pick a roll call, please.
Councilmember Keldor.
Yes.
Councilmember Giroux.
Did you just seize up?
I, well, the constant roll call is confusing me.
Tell me about it. Councilmember Giroux.
Yes.
Councilmember Boils.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Baldino.
Yes.
And Mayor Pimentel.
Yes, okay, council discussion. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you for the work that you've done at HR, especially the updating of the positions. When we see those come through being redlined and you're removing things that don't make sense, that is a big help. So thank you for your presentation and the work that you do.
Thank you. I will just echo that. I know I have asked of you kind of this question. And so while I understand that this might be, I don't know if an overreach is the right word, but yet another thing on your plate, a law that the state is mandating. I do appreciate having an opportunity to see how the vacancies are varying by bargaining units. I think that that maybe my hope is this ultimately helps us help you fill some of those vacancies. For me, I know it's surprising to see the highest vacancy in the professional employee association, because I know that that is really the, one of the work engines of a number of things that happen at the city. And you have a high vacancy in the HR department, which just makes all of this harder. So while this is something that I think the state has mandated and is requiring, that just again adds another element, how I would like to see us use it is to provide some feedback or get some, I guess, feedback from you about what you need from us to help with the hiring. Because while we're not at 20, 17.9 and 15% is high in the sense of, you know, actually being able to do the work that's asked of you. So thank you for this.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, I just want to make a point of distinction on this, on that same slide eight. You don't need to go back to it, but there's a difference between positions being vacant and positions being frozen. We have not frozen these vaca-- it's just being, it's just difficult to hire. We're attempting to hire into these positions. It's just been a challenge to get people to take those jobs or to stay in those jobs. Is that accurate?
That's accurate. We only had two positions that were frozen during this budget year. One was the fire marshal and one was a community development, I believe it's plan check engineer. So those two positions were frozen during this budget year. Other than that, that we have, I mean, the city manager can attest, we have made multiple offers to people and they turned us down.
Yeah, correct. I just want to make sure that just everybody understands, this is not a matter of us not wanting to hire people into these positions.
Oh, no. No, the council said--
Because sometimes the number, no, I mean, we just in general, it's just that the number sometimes when you look at them, you're like, oh my goodness, we have these vacancies. It's not that we want there to be vacancies.
No.
It's just a tough environment right now to fill those positions.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's worth noting, right, that city governance is not a demand-driven business, right? We don't move people around and have the luxury of being the private sector where we decide that this unit only needs nine and that unit needs 39, right? So we could have a vacant unit in a department that might be an underutilized spot, so it might be a lower priority for us to fill than a higher demanded spot. That said, this state law has nothing to do with the city of El Segundo. This is driven by political considerations outside of our remit. I would ask this, do you have a sense of what our average length of service time is? Or our churn rate in these numbers? Because it's one thing to see, you know, a 17% vacancy rate in SPIA, but if that's, you know, a glut of retirees that are all happening, who were all 25-year employees, I mean, those are happy employees.
So to address the 17.9% rate in SPIA, the vacancies in SPIA, we had someone resign to go to another city in the environmental specialist position. The fire marshal, as I mentioned earlier, was frozen. And we have tried, we're still trying to recruit for an emergency management coordinator that was vacated. And then we have a senior plan check engineer. That one has been very difficult as well.
And that emergency manager, I mean, there was an offer out. He went all the way through the process, I understand, and just decided--
That is correct.
Yeah, so it's not through any lack of effort on your part or the city's part.
I believe we've made two offers twice for that job. So the feedback on that the last time was asking for a lot of things that we just don't have in our structure here.
Understood. I get it.
But in a sense of employee duration, are you seeing a significant amount of churn of employees who've worked here less than five years? I mean, the dreaded cases, are you turning into a stepping stone sort of position? Or are we just often used as a stalking horse for a bargaining approach to somebody's current employer, like you alluded to?
The latter, yes, I definitely have seen that. And in terms of, I guess you're asking for the turnover rate, I don't have that number. I myself have been with the city a little over four years, and there've been quite a number of people that I've hired in the time that I've been here who've already left. And some of those reasons that they give in their exit interviews, they're more like office-type of positions, so they're wanting the hybrid work schedule or the work from home. Or it's the commute where they find a job that's closer to their house that pays a little bit more. So that's really the, some of the reasons in the exit interviews when people have left that only have a short duration. But the city of El Segundo has a lot of long-term employees. We definitely have a lot of long-term employees. A lot of employees do love the city and love this community.
Thank you. Councilmember Boils, any questions from you? All right, this is--
No, I'm good, thank you.
This is a receive and file. Do we have consensus to receive and file?
Yes.
So receiveth, so filed. Thank you, Director Reddick.
Thank you.
We already-- We already adopted. Now we're receiving. Right, item 13, public hearing for adoption of fiscal year 2526 master fee schedule. This is also a time and place heretofore fixed for a public hearing. City clerk, proper notice given on this one as well?
Yes, sir, it was.
Is there any written communication received?
No written communication.
The public hearing is now open. Director Chung, what was yours?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, city council members. Tonight is the public hearing and adoption of the proposed fiscal year 2526's master fee schedule.
We can now fix the attorney fees? He's gone? Got to be in the room, man.
So the staff comes to council around May. Once we update our master fee schedule with the various CPI, and this year, the CPI is calculated from December to December. And I know the presentation says 3.48. The staff report says 3.48. But upon the ninth hour, I did find out that it should have been 3.30. And that was the rate that we used for all the various fees. So I just wanted to make sure it was a simple oversight on my part. I apologize, council, but it should have been 3.30. At 3.48, that was the CPI of this current year that the council adopted. So I just wanted to preface that. Best practices has always been to go ahead and increase fees on an annual basis instead of waiting for five, six years until you raise it, because then at that time, that big factor to kind of jump back up to the cost recovery part hurts a lot more. And so most municipalities increase rates on an annual basis. With that said, for next year, if council adopts these fees as proposed, it's approximate $250,000 for next year, which was included in the proposed budget as well. One thing to note, council, is that the aquatics fees, as they are not changing at this time that's proposed, being that it's currently in its phase of the facility and programs assessment. And so once that is done, staff will come back to council with that assessment and also with any fee changes. And at that time, council can go ahead and approve or revise those fees at that time. And lastly, there are eight new fees that I will go into on subsequent slides. There's 10 changes, meaning anything that's beyond the regular CPI of 3.30. We flag those for council to consider, and then one deletion of a fee. Regards to, I know this is small, I tried to make it as big as possible. This is an attachment to the staff report, but these are any new fees, there are eight new fees. There's subpoena fees, lobbyist fees that we're adding, pickleball, this was from RPL that they wanted to go ahead and add these fees for next year. Club Kalabanga, there's some various fees. This was a program for the after-school program that was presented to council by Ellie Mancini a couple of weeks ago. Also, the department wanted to add Washington Park picnic area, the capacity of 25, being that the only fee that was available for Washington Park was for the Washington Park grass area. So this is more of a smaller location, so they wanted to make, reflect that on the fee schedule. And lastly, the showmobile, this is really the mobile stage that the city owns. We wanted to make sure we reflect that fee as well, being that we use, we provide that stage for various special events that is requested for throughout the year. These are just changed fees, meaning anything beyond the 3.30 CPI. So let me just start with the credit card processing. The current fee currently is up to 2.99% plus a 99 cents transaction fee. Just to kind of go into a little more detail on that, it is, there's various softwares that the city have that has various other merchants. We have a total of four that charges various different rates. For instance, OpenGov is our permitting software. That is run by a company called Stripe, and they charge that 2.99% plus the 99 cents per transaction fee. But now, for instance, Rec, Civic Rec, which is a recreation software that we use, their merchant is OpenEdge, they charge 2.9% no transaction fee. And that's a surcharge that's charged to the customer or the resident. With that said, for next year, the proposed rate is up to 3.75% plus the 99 cents per transaction. And the various softwares that are currently in place are not changing. Those rates are staying the same. But for next year, with our new ERP system coming online, their system is called Tyler Payments, and we do want to consolidate some of our other softwares into this one payment system, but they do charge a 3.75%. So I wanted to let the council know that that would be the rate. And most likely it will come into, go live in January of 2026. So the stormwater inspection fee, this is just a name change. The department, Public Works, wanted to kind of strike out the restaurant name and put commercial inspections. And in the commercial inspections includes restaurants, automobile, auto shops, and nurseries. And then also, instead of just automobile, they wanted to strike that out and put industrial inspections, which includes manufacturing, aerospace, and petroleum. And this is only triggered when an MPDES permit is required. Also for changes, library facility rental, these are not cost recovery, these are market-driven. So the department wanted to go ahead and adjust these according to the market. So we're asking for that increase for next year. Additional changes for date camps, there's some various fees that the department had increased hours for the program, so that they wanted to go ahead and recover those additional hours on the fee. So you see that change beyond the 3.3% CPI increase. And also the youth basketball, they wanted to also increase that by 20%, being that there were some increased expenses that they wanted to reflect on those fees as well. For the El Segundo youth drama program, they wanted to keep that fee same for next year, going into next year, being that some of these fees were adjusted a couple of years ago, and they wanted to keep that flat going into next year. Also, the recreation parks, sport amenities fees, they also wanted to keep these unchanged going into next year. Batting cage as well, or the tennis, racquetball, pickleball courts, but the batting cage as well.
Paul, can I ask you a clarifying question? You say "they." Who's "they"?
RPL, sorry. Recreation parks and library.
Okay, so can you just explain? Like you, when you say "they," you didn't want to change something because you didn't want to change it, or because what? I mean, because the costs are not going down?
Are you talking about the drama?
Just anything that we just use "they." I just want to know what, why they decided what they did.
So we are very sensitive to the fact that a lot of these programs, the council has historically wanted us to make affordable or keep affordable. So we're very careful about when we raise fees. So for example, the drama program, we raised fees pretty significantly, I think it was two years ago. So that was why we are not recommending an increase at this time. So we're trying to do, you know, incremental increases over time, but consistently bringing, as you'll see, there are several that we're asking to increase.
So it's just a matter of this one was just done, so you want to be able to kind of take him a little bit of a breather?
Right. And I need to also do some more, and I'm going to, I've done some work in this program in particular, in the past year, as we all know. So I'm just--
We have made an investment.
Trying to move that through slowly and make it--
Which particularly with that particular program, we've made an investment.
Correct. Yes.
So our subsidy keeps going up.
So we'll be, we'll likely be bringing this back to you for further consideration sometime in the next year or so. But I need to do a little bit more research.
Thank you.
Also wanted to preface that, we do want to do a fee study. I believe this is our fifth year. Typically, we want to do a fee study every five years or so. Just for, just being honest with the council, being that we are implementing our ERP, the capacity for finance to conduct a fee study was, at this time, a little too much on our plate. So we do want to eventually do a fee study. I would say probably in the next year and a half, I will definitely come back to council to request a fee study to be conducted, where we will look at all the fees as well. Just kind of touch on some of the name changes for the parks as well, just the Constitutional Park grass area and also the Washington Park grass area as well for name changes. Lastly, we just have one deletion of a fee for library, being that this is no longer being offered. With that said, that concludes my presentation. Council's action would be to adopt the resolution approving the updated city's master fee schedule. And with that said, I am open to any additional questions. Thank you.
Do we have any public comments? Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Baldino on the first, second, Drew on the second, roll call vote please, Madam Clerk.
Dorf, yes. Councilmember Drew.
Yes.
Councilmember Boiles.
Yes.
Um, Mayor Pro Tem Baldino.
Yes.
And Mayor Pimentel.
Yes, motion passes, the public hearing is closed, council discussion.
Um, I was gonna mention about the aquatics being changed, once we have that, so I'm glad you brought that up, Paul. But, um, the finance committee is also looking at our film permitting process. And that, so we, we may come back with these film permit fees, because just looking at these, they may be a little low. But this is something else that we're gonna kind of focus on this and aquatics and come back and maybe have some different fees for us. So I have no problem keeping them the way they are with the CPI. I think it's smart to do a little bit every year, because that jump every five years is kind of a sticker shock. And this way, we can help kind of cover some of our expenses, so I, I really have no problem.
Well, we're likely to see a rush to get filming back in Los Angeles. And that, without it being a race to the bottom, I think it's worth it for us to be as attractive as possible on it. Uh, but further council discussion.
Yeah, Mayor, this is Councilmember Boiles.
Please do.
Mr. Chung, I've just, I've never heard of, uh, credit card process and fee as high as almost four points. Um, so what, with Tyler, what specifically will our constituents be paying for with the credit card?
I, I want to piggyback on that, Councilmember Boiles, because the vast majority of these are likely to be people paying their water bill. And we're just nickel and dime on them for fifteen bucks every time they pay their water bill that keeps going up, which as we know, wholly out of our control because we're glorious neighbors. So please, defend our wonderful ERP system and its fees.
Yes, it's a great question. Um, when Dino and I first met with Tyler and they proposed this rate, that was the, the first sticker shock for us. We did say, "Why is it so high?" It, it is, um, Tyler Technologies, they're the merchant that's actually gonna be charging this fee. Because we are incorporating the, the Tyler Payment System into our ERP system, um, that was the rate that was presented. It's not set in stone yet, we are in the process of negotiating, being that we felt that the rate was definitely too high. Um, and so, most likely before that rate is set, we will come back to council and inform the council what that rate is. They just told us that's the current rate that, um, that they're proposing to us. And that was the only information I had at the time when this was, uh, drafted.
And they won't let you integrate to, uh, another credit card processor, I'm assuming? It'd be, it'd be interesting to know, because, um, I'm guessing they want that lucrative business. But if we have the ability, we should integrate elsewhere. I just have a problem with the overall, uh, passing that fee along, because credit card process is a cost of doing business. And, um, you know, we have credit cards, we have checks, or we have direct ACH from bank accounts. And we all know that we prefer credit cards over checks, because there's more certainty that the funds are gonna clear. So I've always had a problem with us passing on the credit card processing fee, most businesses do not. No, we're not a business, but, um, and then when I heard almost four points, it just is, uh, that's egregious.
Uh, I totally understand, Councilmember, and, um, one thing that Dino just mentioned is that, um, we will, that, not only look into the rate itself, but also, um, can we use a third-party different merchant before we incorporate, um, y- using the Tyler Payment System? As I mentioned, Tyler Payment System kind of integrates everything together, being that we have, what, four, five various software? So we'll be able to at least integrate three softwares together. Even our utility billing will be integrated into the system. Um, the, the cost of it, when we do a rate study, we'll look into, okay, overall, how do we incorporate the cost? And how does that play a role into what the rates will be eventually? But I think that's more kind of in the future, as I mentioned. Before we kind of sign anything, we will definitely keep the council, uh, informed. We'll come back to finance committee, kind of give you also an update regards to, um, what that rate is, being that it is high and I, I do not feel comfortable signing at three point seven five as well.
I think with resident fees on all of these, and that, that one being the most glaring example, I mean, these people are already paying their taxes. So they're paying for a Tyler system to charge them, to pay Tyler is, I think, excessive. I have a question for you about the new subpoena fee, it stood out to me when I saw it on there. Someone is exercising their constitutional rights, seeking redress, they ask for a subpoena, and then we charge them to get a officer to testify? Is that what the fee is? Can you explain that fee?
I think it might be for document subpoenas.
I don't know, I don't know, they want, they want, they want, uh, it's witness fee, right?
Yeah, it is witness.
So that's by statute.
Do we have to charge for that, or, I mean, what, it's new, it's a new fee this year, why is it new? Talk to me.
The fee itself is that's, set by statute, and to serve a subpoena, you have to pay it.
Very well, okay.
Now, it's, it's common, when you subpoena someone for a witness fee.
It wasn't common to us, it's brand new to us.
Well, I'm, I'm sure it was always there by statute, we just weren't collecting it.
Uh, I think we have an interest in streamlining fees as much as possible. I know Carol used to bang the drum on this. We issue like two amplified sound permits per year, used to be three, before we went to Silent Disco at my house. Question is, why are we still charging such a high rate, which clearly no one uses it, but people use amplified sound all the time? It's our interest to keep people who comply. I think having, charging people two hundred dollars for a permit that gets them to ten o'clock is probably excessive, and by excessive, I mean useless. So I don't know why we even have this fee.
I don't.
But wait, there's more. I don't know why we have the fortune teller fee either, does it cost extra to license a fortune teller? So can we finally get rid of this? We got rid of the Western Show, finally, thank you very much. Thank you very much for getting rid of that, and we got rid of Circus, I appreciate it. Uh, but I just don't understand why we are continuing to document fees that are never charged.
Now it seemed to be the time to get rid of them.
Can we strike them?
Yes, it's the, it's up to the council's discretion if we want.
Anybody still want to charge for a, uh, I mean, is there something unique about fortune tellers?
Well, I, no, not fortune tellers, I have some questions about the amplified sound. Is that intended for residential use, or?
We give no guidance, and it's issued twice per year, once to Ed Foundation and once usually to Chris Pimentel.
He's talking about that party ordinance, where if you want to go past a certain time, you have to pull a permit to have people in your house.
Actually, no, it doesn't go, it doesn't extend the time, it just certifies that you have an amplified sound.
I just was informed that the amplified sound, being that various special events, you know, a lot of sound is coming from those events, and so I think we've been getting a lot of those requests.
Maybe we can get a clarification about what it's for? Like, Ed Foundation takes one out for a big event, but, you know, somebody's quinceañera in the backyard, maybe doesn't need it. I, I don't think people know why it's used. Uh, but I think we actively dissuade people from engaging it, because it's very high.
Well, I'm sure we can give council direction that it should only be applied to special events and not for residential purposes.
Year six of giving the direction, I guess we'll give it year six once again. Please clarify for our fine residents, so they can stay in compliance. Can we get, is there any reason of a fortune teller fee? What, what's different about fortune tellers? Tell me what I'm missing.
The only thing I was informed was the fortune teller could be a PD-related kind of...
Chief, talk to us.
...that might go out.
I mean, I get some of these massage parlors, I get pool hall, I get bingo. Yeah, people laundering money through bingo, I get it. Okay, can we get rid of the fortune teller fee?
Motion to strike the fortune teller.
Okay, receive and, receive and file it away in the circular bin.
Will do.
Thank you. Finally, I win my war on extra paper. Thought we have copiers either way. What was my last one?
You didn't close on fortune teller.
Oh, talk to me about the, uh, the In-Lu fees on the parking. For some reason, I thought that was changing for the downtown specific plan in Lufy.
No, I think we rubber stamped that in the Smoky Hollow, we've got In-Lu fees everywhere all over this town now.
So, or is it just the requirement per the change? Director Allen, talk to me.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council. Um, the In-Lufy, I think what you're recalling, Mayor, is that when we adopted the revised downtown specific plan, we adopted several alternative options to, or in addition to the In-Lufy. So In-Lufy is still there, but there are several other relaxed parking standards that were adopted with the downtown specific plan. Otherwise, um, Public Works's recent project in Smoky Hollow, testing out the one-way and diagonal parking, was part of a recipient of using some of those funds. And any future funds in Smoky Hollow will also contribute to future enhancements.
Very well, thank you. I knew I remembered some change, it was not the dollar value. Last one, uh, because I know we beat up wrecking parks every year when this thing comes up. There we go, come on down. Remember, these people are also already paying their taxes, why is it so much more expensive to send them to Tiny Tots? How many additional hours?
So we changed the program hours, so the program is longer, that's why the fee is, but you're asking specifically how many hours?
Like, how, we, we, we added a significant percentage.
Yes.
Yes, so we added, this past year, we added one hour to the camp, so five total hours. Last year, when the rates were approved, there was an hourly rate that was part of it. So, the proposed rate is the CPI off of an eighty dollar for resident rate and a one oh six sixty for non-resident rate.
Got it, okay.
So the one, the eighty and one oh six sixty is what we currently charge. And then, we're proposing the CPI in addition to that, and that's why there's the eighty-three and one-ten.
Okay, I can back my way into the number, thank you very much. All right, without me hijacking this further and running out of small things to pull out, does anyone else have any council comments? All right, uh, I guess now, I'll just take a motion to adopt the master fee schedule. There's nothing you have to read this time, is there, City Attorney?
There's a resolution of the City of El Segundo establishing a schedule of fees and charges for recovering costs incurred from providing various ser- city services, ready for adoption. With the noted changes, um, made by council.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Councilmember Drew on the first.
Baldino will second.
Mayor Pro Tem on the second, and then we'll get that final number on the credit card fee later, correct?
Yes.
Very well, uh, roll call vote.
Councilmember Keldorff.
Yes.
Councilmember Drew.
Yes.
Councilmember Boiles.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Baldino.
Yes.
And Mayor Pimentel.
Yes, passes, thank you Director Chung. Item fourteen, an update on the Uruswari Swim Stadium renovation project. Director Sassoon, the floor is yours.
Before you start, Elias, I'll disclose that this was discussed at the Aquatics Subcommittee on Monday. It wasn't presented, but there were questions. Uh, and so I asked them if they had a recommendation to pass along, to go ahead and do that, and I would make that recommendation. They are recommending the tile. So with that disclosure...
Thank you so much. Good evening, good, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the City Council. So we basically have, uh, two options regarding the, the, uh, bottom of the, of the both pools. The, the first option is tiles, and the second option is utilizing plaster. So I tried to come up with a way to compare the two, make it easier for everyone to see. So the approximate, approximate cost for the tile option is now seven hundred thousand, down from previously number of, of eight hundred thousand. And the cost for the plaster is five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, the lifespan for the first option for the tiles is fifty years plus. Although, uh, based on, uh, the input from the consulting firm, it could go as much as sixty or seventy-five years. The, uh, the lifespan for the plaster option is at the most fifteen years. Uh, regarding the warranty, both options have one-year warranty for labor. However, the tiles option has twenty-five years of warranty for materials and waterproofing. Uh, regarding plaster, there is only three years of warranty for materials and waterproofing for the plaster option. Uh, the lead time, uh, for the, for the tiles is ten weeks. We have to have that place, uh, that, that order in place ten, it takes, it takes ten weeks for, for the, for the tiles to arrive. The waterproofing regarding the tiles is seven layers. But for the plaster option is only two coats. And lastly, the maintenance regarding the tiles, the maintenance is approximately twelve thousand a year, and the plaster is twice as much, at twenty-four thousand a year. So there are a few, a few more notes, uh, based on my discussion that I had with the consulting firm. Uh, the, uh, the lifespan of, of plaster, as I indicated, is relatively much shorter. Uh, with respect to the plaster, we have to keep a very close eye on the calcium chemistry of the water, because if it is off the balance, it really could adversely impact the plaster. And they made sure that I understood that very well, so. With respect to the plaster option, the pool cannot be drained all the way. We have to have a certain depth, maybe two, three feet of water at all times. Otherwise, it's really recipe to get, you know, to get the plaster destroyed. Uh, the plaster option will not be durable, uh, it degrades with age. It will stain and becomes rough, and it will lose its clean and shiny appearance over time. Uh, the plunge is not a very good candidate for plaster option either, because the bottom of the pool is very rough. It's not like a new roof where it is smooth, so it's very difficult to apply the plaster and the waterproofing that would be very effective, it's very difficult to do that. Uh, next page, please. So the advantage of, of the tile option, and some of this may be repeat, is, is relatively long lifespan with a lower maintenance cost. It will, it will simulate the appearance of the original pool and will be consistent, as, as you know, this is, this is a historic building, so it, it will, uh, it will be consistent with the building's overall historic character. It'll be uniform and similar to the original work that was done. It will also provide the best-looking, um, and very durable stain resistance finish, and will provide a new and solid waterproofing membrane system, as I indicated, several, seven layers of waterproofing, and will further protect the existing structural concrete pool system. So we really took a lot of time to study this, and, uh, I personally got very much involved in this. And after a lot of discussion, uh, we highly recommend, along with our consulting firm, who is specializing in this field, uh, to utilize the tiles. And, uh, I'd be glad to answer any question that you may have. As, uh, Mayor Pro Tem indicated, the Aquatics Subcommittee met yesterday, and they also recommended the tiles, the tiles option.
Council discussion. Explain to me what calcium is going to do differently to a plaster pool than to any of our other pools? Like you have to maintain the calcium level, you get hard, deposits, your hardness, it'll destroy your heater, it does that to all pools. Why is it magic in a plaster pool, what's it do differently?
I believe it has to do with the, uh, make-out of the, the chemicals, uh, that, that are in the plaster option. And the calcium, uh, is the hard, hardness of the water. If the calcium is, is off balance, it will have a chemical reaction along with the plaster that would not happen with the tile option.
I mean, it'll stain it, because it's rough, right, it's hard to wipe away.
Yes, and...
I think that, that's not destructive to the pool, that's, all pools have calcium maintenance issues, that's how we destroyed the heaters at the other place.
But, again, uh, the professionals tell me that that lowers the lifetime of, of the plaster even lesser than fifteen years, if the calcium is not controlled.
Yeah, I, I, but we'll have to control the calcium in pools.
Exactly.
Uh, i- is a bit of my, my, my point, I have, uh... Say, can you go back to the slide of what were the other cons? I noticed we didn't give any pros. Yeah, I, were these measured both on indoor pools, as opposed to outdoor pools?
Yeah, regardless of...
Like, what's the wear and tear?
Yes, sir, regardless of indoor or outdoor, the same characters, the same, the same advantages and disadvantages. Uh, when, when we say fifteen year, uh, at the end of fifteen year, most likely, if we choose the plaster option, that means we have to potentially redo the entire plaster. And if we are able to save the waterproofing, fine. But if we are not, and most likely we would not be able to, to save those two coats of waterproofing, then you're looking at an additional... then you're looking at an additional five hundred and, not additional, you would, you'd be looking at five hundred and sixty thousand dollars in fifteen years again.
L- let me ask this, y- you've been a public works director around the area, have you, any of the cities you worked in had plaster pools?
Yes, in, in my previous life, we did have plaster pools in some of the parks, uh, with the same issues.
So they were regularly draining them and replastering them?
We, uh, uh, I think one time it was about thirteen years, and as I remember, the other one, maybe sixteen years, we had to redo.
And those are indoor or outdoor?
They were outdoor.
Outdoor.
Yes, and i- it was full of stain, it, it didn't look good, it was rough. Uh, my experience and my input is I highly recommend we do the tiles. And, you know, the difference of the cost between five sixty and seven hundred, you're, you're looking at not, not much of, not much of dollars, the difference. And frankly, the lifetime itself, I mean, frankly, in my humble opinion, you know, it's a lot of advantages to go along with the tiles.
Other council discussion?
I mean, I do love myself a good sales presentation, um, and this one is basically set up so that we would be complete idiots to choose plaster.
Oh, I agree.
Because in ten years, the cost of maintenance versus tile, so in this case, I don't know why anyone in their right mind in any pool in the world would ever choose plaster. Because it doesn't make any economic sense to do it.
And yet somehow people do.
I know, so in the end, when we first did this project, the idea was, through all of it, was we're gonna reuse the tiles, can't use those anymore, right? So that becomes an extra cost, right?
Yeah, originally...
So this is, so this has gone, the reason why we're having to vote on this, or, one way or another, is because we've gone past the little delta they had for, for the overspend, right, basically?
Yes, correct, the, the contingencies.
Overspend, contingency, tomato, tomato, same thing, right? So bottom line is it's costing us more than even when the contingency is, so really, we're at this point. It's, tile makes the only thing that makes sense based on what they're telling us here. The, it, the other thing just doesn't make any sense at all, and I, I don't think this is the last time that someone, they're gonna come to this either before this thing finally opens up, so I think in the end, uh, for, as, as much as, um, I think I saw all this coming, uh, let's push play and go, we're already pot-committed on this. There's really not much we can do at this point.
I'm just astounded that there's not a better argument for plaster, because clearly, lots of pools are made with it.
I got you, but based on what you're telling us, is it in our design company?
Calcium, despite the fact plaster is made of calcium.
Not even, I mean, there's not, there's nothing even for us to decide on, it's, it's tiles. When it was first brought up and the price was eight hundred and plaster was estimated about half of that, that's when it was like, let's go to council, this is a decision that council needs to make. One, because you're right, we're, we're already going to be over budget, this goes another eight hundred over that. Um, but just for the twenty-five-year waterproofing warranty, that's worth the difference of a hundred and sixty, because we are rehabilitating an old building. I'm shocked we're getting a twenty-five-year warranty on this work, but that, if we're, if we're going to spend the money, we are obligated to do it correctly, so that we don't create a problem for others in the future. And so I agree, even though it's more expensive, it is the more economically prudent thing to go with the tiles, because we're gonna have a longer lifespan and less maintenance and warranty cost over the long run. So we may not like it, it's the reality of what we signed up for in rehabilitating this classic structure. Um, and my recommendation is go with the tile. I, I, I reluctantly agree, I would like to also just reiterate again, how, how, how far short are we on our funding now, adding another seven hundred thousand dollars in?
I believe, uh, we have...
This is all coming out of general funds, just...
That's correct, we, general fund, uh, unless we are able to, uh, be able to get more money.
We still haven't covered the first delta, so now we're having to add this to, to what we already have, right? So, we have about one point eight that's been raised, and now we're what, about five mil plus short?
About two million in it, about two million?
We're about one point eight raised.
One point eight.
So three point seven coming out of general fund? Okay. So basically, three point seven out of the general fund, just, I, let's just deal with facts right now, so. It's gonna be, um, it's, it's supposed to be opening up in seven months, so... Three point seven out of the general fund, okay. I concur with you, Mr. Baldino.
Other council comments? Councilmember Boils, anything?
Nope.
The Tile Association of Americas producing slides left and right, left and right. Radon gas comes from plaster, killer bees.
You're the only swimmer up here, you don't have any comments about pools?
I mean, this ship has sailed long before I arrived here, so I'm just riding the wave of, of, I, at this point, you have to do something with the twenty-five-year warranty. There's no other option, I think.
All right, there's no more discussion. It appears there's no more discussion on this valuable, valuable item of aquatic decor.
The bill is due in October, when is the, what's the, uh, when is our, for the community who wants to donate to the plunge?
Yes.
You have until?
That's right.
October, December?
Yeah, fundraising could be extended, couldn't it? We could extend it, I don't see why we wouldn't extend it.
I know, I, I know, it...
Right.
I know after speaking with, with our Parks and Rec director, we have a number of appointments in the next forty-five days with hopefully major contributors to the Capitol campaign, so we will keep you posted on how those go.
Yes, we've got three actually set up within the next few weeks that are potential big donors. Um, I know, uh, Mr. George is gonna be meeting with Mr. Lundquist also, so I still remain confident that we'll, we'll, uh, we'll get very close to that three point seven.
Maybe even more.
Maybe even more.
Let's keep positive.
Three point seven, it's oddly the same number as that credit card fee.
That's a good slogan, tiles beautiful.
Based on that, we need to up that credit card charge, I think.
Do you get your name in tiles?
Yeah.
First letter's free. Yeah, we gotta vote. Oh no, we're receiving filing, receiving filing.
Well, we're asking for direction.
Who wants to provide guidance?
I, I, I will be the one to provide direction to move ahead with the tile recommendation.
Do, we don't have to vote, I don't, do, we do have to vote, seven hundred thousand dollars, who would like to move?
I'll move.
Baldino on the uno, who's got the second?
All seconds.
Keldorff on the second, all in favor of tile, a roll call vote?
Doki, Councilmember Keldorff?
Yes.
Councilmember Giroux?
Yes.
Councilmember Boils?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baldino?
Yes.
And Mayor Pimentel?
Yes, as long as I get an autographed tile from Mayor Protem Baldino.
In the deepest end of the pool.
In the deepest end, right by the filter.
You want it on the shallow, so you see, you know?
Oh, this is a shallow, I'm in the deep end on this. Item fifteen, update on the preferential parking zone three pilot program and resolution to be super popular, make the program permanent. Who will present on this item? Oh, Director Sassoon.
Yes.
The hot potato is yours.
Thank you. So, uh, we, as the city council members, uh, we have visited a number of times regarding this item. What this slide shows is the most up-to-date current regulations regarding Zone Three. And in summary, uh, basically for last few months, about six months ago, when we adopted the, uh, this very slide, uh, yours truly, we, I received a few comments, and the comments had to do with the following, which is on the staff report. I heard from some residents on the east side of Indiana, they want no overnight parking except by permit. And along Holly between Washington and Illinois, it's lower middle part of the slide, along Holly on both sides, between Illinois and Washington, they also want no overnight parking except with permit. And lastly, I heard from a few residents that didn't like the, the fact that along north side of Mariposa, between Illinois to Kansas was added. That's on the north part of the slide, along Mariposa on the north side, between Illinois and Kansas on the north side, we added that to be part of the Zone Three.
And they didn't like that.
Pardon?
They didn't like that.
They did not like that. So...
You're welcome.
These are the input I received, and of course, we had the speaker here who spoke. And the reason that the lady raised the question, I respond to you. The reason Illinois court was not included in there, because the petition we received did not include Illinois court. Absolutely did not, so.
So just to clarify, the, the people who did not want Mariposa added, were they living on Mariposa? Or were they living elsewhere and didn't want other people in on the permits?
Uh, a few residents who called, I, and I did ask them, a few of them, and, and I could count the number of people by one hand. Uh, they called, they were either lived on the Illinois court, and about, uh, two of them on the west side of, uh, Mariposa, on the west side of Kansas. In other words, they felt like these cars are being pushed in their front edge because of the, the fact that we added Mariposa on the north side to be part of the Zone Three program.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Because they are.
Um, so let me start, I am, uh, okay with making what we prior, priorly approved permanent.
Yes, sir.
And I'm open for discussion on Illinois's court, because I think we created an island over there, which was an oversight when we were, were doing this. Um, I don't think we need to expand what we have there. And then, as a more general statement?
Yes, sir.
I am not proud of how the decisions have been made on this. I think we've been very reactionary, and we've made some policy that we can't roll out across the city. To have a pilot program, we're supposed to learn something about what works and what doesn't work. We have been given money as part of Pacific Coast Commons to do a parking traffic study for that project. I would recommend that we start that before they pull permits and start construction, so that we can kind of project and be ready for a project that we've already approved, that we know is gonna bring a lot more traffic to just north of this area. And with that parking study, I hope that we learned something that we can then expand throughout El Segundo, because we are just kind of pushing problems around here. Um, when you make something twenty-four-hour permit only, people are gonna drive an extra two blocks and park in someone else's front yard. So I, I would like to be more, uh, intentional?
Yes, sir.
More proactive, and come with some solutions about what would make sense if we basically want to have this buffer two, three blocks west of PCH, because that's where our, our impact is gonna be as we continue to develop, and there's plenty of office buildings we've proved to be over there. Uh, so that, that's just in the future. For what's in front of us right now, I'm, I'm okay with making this permanent, and I'm open to discussion about adding Illinois's court, if there's any interest.
One more thing I would like to add, if you give me opportunity, the number of citations that have been issued through April the thirtieth has been two hundred and forty citations. And the number of calls that we have received for, uh, for our area to the east of Indiana, complaints that the police department received, we compared the twen- for year of twenty-four and year of twenty-five, January through April. So the calls for the year twenty, two thousand twenty-four were twenty-six calls. Uh, for year of twenty-five, it was twenty-four, it came down a little bit. I just wanted to also let you have those statistics.
So we got a couple things, number one, on that, two hundred and forty citations, one of the things I asked about was, out of that two forty, how many of those citations were given out to El Segundo residents?
I asked that from the police chief, and he indicated to me that would be very difficult to get, he, and I led him to elaborate.
Okay, I think we need to know that, because the initial major complaint was that it, the problem in that area was not the residents parking there, the problem was people that are not residents going, whether it was Turo, or going to the airport, or Uber, or whatever it was, that was the problem. So, I would think the citations would tell us that story.
Yeah, we'd have to go through all individually and get the zip codes potentially to see how that, if that determines that actual data. So we didn't pull that data set, uh, and when Elias mentioned the data set for calls for service, there was a flip, when you looked at the twenty-four calls for service, in twenty-four, twenty-one of those were for us doing periodic checks in the four hundred to five hundred block of Indiana Street. When it came to twenty-five, twenty-one of those calls were for actually writing parking citations in that same corridor. So there was a difference in the offset of what kind of manpower we needed to basically do some police work in that area, where it went from enforcement for parking citations versus let's do some proactive police work to make sure there's no crime happening in that corridor. Uh, but again, I can try to see if we can pull that data, uh, but as you know, sometimes cars may not be registered to people the right at their home, it could be registered somewhere differently, uh, as to how accurate that information is, I can tell you, but we can definitely pull that data.
I just think it's an important data set, but, I, I got you, so then, um, thank you. So, on this, um, a couple things that I, I'd like to address is that, one of, the, the initial impetus for me to even want to do a pilot program was much less about finding places for people to park, and much more about taking care of what the crime area was, and the problem area was, and the transient occupation was, and people staying overnight, and weird vans coming in and staying all night, that was really what, that was the reason why I wanted to look at this. And I do believe that it's turned partially into, let's make sure we give everybody enough parking spaces, I think we probably have, it's, I think to Councilmember, sorry, MPT, uh, Baldino's point, we have to understand that we, we need to roll this out in best we can and learn from it. So with that in mind, there's a couple things I'd like to look at, number one being the Indiana spot behind the hotels, okay? I just don't think there should be any overnight parking there at all. It's a business district, there's parking that people who are staying there have to pay for, and whether you're permit or not, like, I don't, I don't think we should, we should be taking permits for residential and putting them in the business districts, I, I don't think we can do that. So I would like to take that, which is currently light blue and magenta, whatever we're calling it there. I would like to say, there's just no overnight parking there, you could be, eh, maybe also it's two-hour parking from whatever, six AM to six PM, and there's just no overnight parking.
Even with permit?
Even with permit, because the idea here is not to be granting everybody extra parking, it's taking care of a potential crime area, and I think it would also be a lot easier for law enforcement to be able to police that area if they see your car there overnight, that, that's simple.
Yes, sir.
Yes? Okay, um, as far as the area on Mariposa on the, um, on the north side there, I just don't think we need it. Because if you didn't have it, it would also solve the problem for Illinois court. Right, because you're allowing permits for people who are not really living any, you know, there, but you can live two blocks from there but be able to park there.
Correct.
So I'm just saying, just keep the rec, the, the area that you have, my, my recommendation would, I don't think we need that, and turn that other one into just no overnight parking. I think that helps solve police issues, transient issues, enforcement issues.
Yes, sir.
Because there is, to your point, there's a lot of empty parking over there now, and that's okay. Like the park by the park, uh, that we did that's in purple right now, you know, that, that, that was a good thing, I think that took away a lot. I wish we could, and, and it's not for this meeting, but to address, you know, the Kansas, Washington, that, that business district area, because that does get gnarly at night, it just does, if you drive in that area, I'm sure the police could tell you, it's a tough area. But for the purposes of this residential parking program, those are the only two things I would, I would suggest that we, we relook at, because especially the one in the north part of Mariposa, I think that's probably caused more of a problem than it solved.
Yes. Uh, one thing I'd like to say, Councilmember Giroux, uh, I also hear comments from some of the residents, they really believe that this program has been effective to address the issues of people parking here and taking a flight, and they have seen a lot of positive things. So I also did receive, uh, some, some, uh, very positive, uh, remarks about, about this program.
Other council comments?
Okay, I'm trying, I'm just trying to understand then what we are proposing. If we do that, then does the pilot program get extended, or are we approving it per? Or are we approving it permanent with those adjustments?
The recommendation of staff is to make this permanent with any modifications that City Council wishes to have done tonight.
I would agree with Mayor Protem that, you know, to make this useful, we need to start collecting some more data, so I appreciate you having the citation information, but I don't know how that gets just naturally incorporated and reported out. But I think that that's an important part of the puzzle going forward, yes, as we're going to have more development really east of there. And I would also agree that I think we could lose the portion on the north side of Mariposa. I don't have any issue with extending it into Illinois Court, even with that eliminated. I mean, it really is just, it's not a through street. It feels like it is out there on its own. I don't know that I have an opinion on no overnight parking. But I do trust that if the chief says that that helps with our policing efforts, and I am, is anyone else surprised that there aren't residents here tonight?
Completely shocked.
In addition.
Like, honestly, I.
Outside of the area, yes.
I expected a full house considering what we've been through on this, yes.
Yeah, so it feels a little bit like we're making adjustments without that feedback loop.
We've had an abundance of feedback on this. So what I'm saying is, we've already done the program now, we have the data. I think that last week helps the Illinois Court situation by removing it. I don't think adding parking permits for Illinois Court's going to help this. All of a sudden, now you got, now you got what, another, I forget exactly, I don't even know how many are in there. You said, what, 50 people might live there? We can't, all of a sudden, everybody in the city's going to need a permit. So I think this solves, potentially solves, the policing problem that we have there too in enforcement. I think that's just, that's how I looked at it.
Councilmember Boils?
Yeah, I tend to agree with Councilmember Keldor's comments. I'm not sure how I feel about Councilmember Giroux's no overnight parking. I'm not opposed to it, I just don't know if there'd be any other adverse implications for the residents in that area. But if we don't think so, and the police think it's a good idea, then I can support that as well.
I am partially in Councilmember Giroux's camp on one particular spot of this, in that it was reactive, and reactive by design, we're reacting to solve a problem, but the problem was a public safety issue and an abuse of residential streets by businesses, be it maintenance shops, be it people from the airport, and that's exactly why it was reactive. Each one of these spots was zoned with parkings onboard their addresses, and the intent of a parking permit area is not to create a privileged group of people who are using a public amenity and reserved for them. So I am not necessarily in favor of us extending this in perpetuity if the intent is to make sure people who have an apartment that has by its zone and development agreement a parking spot at it also are entitled to a piece of the public right-of-way. I don't think that should be the intent of it. The intent of this was to solve an immediate problem. The problem was a policing issue, and the problem was an abuse of the streets by businesses. So with that in mind, if we want to make a tweak, like remove Mariposa to alleviate the concerns of Illinois, and if we want to make a change to Indiana to see how it looks, I'm fine with doing that. I'm fine with extending the pilot program to see how it looks with those changes. But making this permanent and establishing a new rule of, or new sort of law of the land in El Segundo, that if you have an apartment and you turn your parking spot into a living room, that we give you a piece of the street, is not, because I assure you, there's other parts of the city, the southwest corner of this city right now is going to come knocking on that very, very quickly. And I think we're exactly on the right track with our future development agreements by telling people if they do a large R3 development that those people are not eligible for parking passes. I think that will solve some of the spillover issues in the future. But with that in mind, if we want to make changes to this parking plan and kick it down the road for six months to see how that looks, I'm fine with that. If we start to see intrusions again from airport parking on Mariposa, then we'll know that, right? That the people have come back and fishing around. If we suddenly start to see campers parked on Mariposa, we'll know we have a problem again, and we need to solve it. But what I do not, or I do not have an appetite for, is making this permanent in perpetuity and allocating people and apartments a piece of the public street, because that never ends.
Can I suggest then that we make it a year program? And then ask staff during that time to, you know, study what's going to happen at Pacific Coast Commons, and then that way we can tweak it, it's there for a year, we've got some more data to look at, and we can reevaluate.
We'll see it first, right, in a little bit further north on PCH from Pacific Coast Commons as construction starts there. The six months or a year thing is outside of my area of expertise, which everyone gives the city attorney least heart palpitations.
This is, this program, you can call it permanent, but the fact is, at any point in time, a future council, this council can change it again, so.
Oh, I want to be at that vote. Who wants to take away people's permanent parking spot? You just go ahead and slash my tires yourself. Why don't you come right over? Throw a yard dart at my window.
Just giving you the legal answer.
I'm in favor of a year program. I think it's a compromise for both those things, removing north of Mariposa, making no overnight parking along Indiana.
On the east side of Indiana, correct?
That's correct, on the side of Zone Commercial.
Yep.
Is that a motion, Councilmember Keldor?
That is a motion.
Extend the pilot program one year with those two changes?
Sure, and then we will see how, if that positively impacts.
Because that should.
What's happening at Illinois.
That should add, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13. That should add 16 spots available on the north side of Mariposa, which ideally should alleviate some of the concerns from Illinois Court.
We can't be, again, I don't want to get into back and forth, because I know I can't, but we simply cannot always be granting residents rights to streets like this. It's just, we can't do it, because we're choosing winners and losers. And we can't get into that habit, because then all of a sudden, you have to replicate that throughout an entire city of 17,000 people, and it'll become an impossibility.
I would add, 72 hours is the maximum amount of time you can be parked in one spot. So if you see the car and you see the wheelie bag go leaving, you can put it into El Segundo Connect, or you can call the non-emergency line, and they'll come mark the tire, and at 72 hours, you know, that car gets a one-way ticket to, well, to a temporary spot of Ticketland. Uh-oh, uh-oh. Special counsel.
The cooler.
The cooler has showed up, the rain on a parade.
So just to make sure about the notion, if you would, right now, there is no restriction on overnight parking on the east side of Indiana. The City Council is recommending that we, the city prohibits overnight parking on the east side of Indiana, whether you have permit or not.
Well, I think the idea is to make it all a two-hour commercial parking zone.
It is already two hours, so.
Right, but two hour anytime, okay, so, but removing the purple and making it all blue. If it's two hour all the time, then you can't park there for 12 hours. But if you have a permit, you get to park there for more than two hours, which could include overnight on that little magenta on the south. Right, so my problem, my problem, my question on that is, for enforcement purposes, if we say, basically there's no overnight parking, so basically no parking between, what, 10 and 6? Something like that, what is it going to make it easier for the police to actually enforce that area? Is there a, is there a perfect situation, hours? I don't know what that looks like. Because two-hour parking means they'd have to be there the entire time to just constantly chalking tires.
Well, it's like anything, it's enforcement, but because it's commercial, right? Maybe you're checking out of your hotel at 1:00 in the AM, you got to park your car there and load it. If you say no parking overnight, no one can park there at all. If it's two hours, you can park there for two hours, and if you're more than two hours, someone can call it in, they'll come out and chalk the tire, and you'll get a ticket. So it's, the commercial zone originally, I believe, was just two hours anytime, because the idea is, and think about, when this does get developed and there is commercial and residential there, you know, are you going to want the ability to have parking overnight?
Problem is, that was what it was before, correct? Before we did this, before we did this pilot program, what was the, what was that area on east Indiana?
I believe there was no two-hour restriction. To my knowledge, I don't remember.
Yeah, it was a free-for-all, people didn't want to pay to stay, to park in the aloft lot.
So for us, when you talk about enforcement.
Yes.
The easiest way to do it would be no overnight parking. If you go to the two-hour restriction, we can work with it, but the possibility of us finding violations will be very difficult at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, because we're focused on other things, and the staff that generally do the parking enforcement are there typically during daytime hours. So it'll be very difficult to have officers that are more looking for other things other than parking violations throughout the night, but it doesn't mean we can't do it.
Right, my concern is that that side of the street is a commercial zone.
Correct.
And I understood a commercial zone was, you've got two hours.
Correct, yeah.
Not that you couldn't park there overnight. So I would just think, you would treat that as a commercial zone, and just say it's just two-hour parking.
Yeah, anything from what we had before, the free-for-all, is beneficial for us, since when you talk about enforcement and criminal activity, I think we were dealing with before, a year or two ago, anything we can do to minimize that is helpful, for sure.
So let me, if you don't mind, can I ask my question again? So on the blue, on the east side of Indiana, from Mariposa to Pine, right now, it is two-hour parking anytime. Are we going to stay with the two-hour parking?
I think we're staying with the two-hour right there.
And then simply add no overnight parking, is that correct?
That's what I was looking for.
Is that no overnight or no at-night parking? What's the difference here?
It's no overnight, and it's hours from overnight is from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM.
So your car, no car could be there from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, or you can?
I mean, I'm asking City Council if that's your pleasure.
Two hours, extend that Tar Heel Blue from Mariposa to Holly.
Yeah, that 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM will cause more problems than it solves.
Okay, so from Mariposa to Holly, it'll be two-hour parking anytime, no overnight parking for everyone?
Just two-hour parking.
Just two-hour parking. We don't even need to say no overnight.
Don't even say no overnight.
Just two-hour parking.
And one of the key data points on this will be, who's getting the tickets, chief? Like, this is, we're not here to write tickets to residents for parking on the wrong side of the street.
I'm sorry, is that question?
Oh, no, I said, the chief, one of the big data points was in line with Councilmember Giroux's question earlier on, was to see who's getting these citations. And if it's somebody visiting grandma on the wrong side of Kansas getting a ticket, that, the intent of this was, that wasn't it.
I mean, really, just to beat the horse again, so then we do need to say no overnight parking, because otherwise, somebody is patrolling to see if there's two-hour parking from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, or 8:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Whereas if you just say no overnight parking, anytime there's a car between 6:00 and 8:00 AM, it's a citation.
Yeah, but people are going to, people can leave, it's a commercial area, people can, so those businesses, some of those businesses are open.
The issue we're kind of looking to solve is, who strolls in around 11:00 to 12:00 o'clock at night, and then just kind of parks there and does whatever they do until 6:00 o'clock in the morning? That's really been what the problem is back there, and the most complaints we get about, you know, transient population, or people sleeping in their cars are doing worse in that area. And then it's a mess in the morning, like, I heard all that. So I'm just saying, how do we solve that problem? Or at least try to attempt to solve it, and then study whether or not that worked or not. And if we put something in place that they can't enforce, then we're defeating the purpose. So if it's simply like, I don't know, can we put something up that says, what's the timeframe, 11:00 to 6:00? I don't know, 12:00 to 6:00? Just shouldn't be many cars there.
Look, if we.
Because anybody's checking out of the hotel, by the way, they all have front entrances, they all have a thing to circle in, and by the way, 90% of the people who are staying there aren't renting cars. They have a parking lot. So I think the idea is, how do we solve our potential problem?
I say two-hour parking, if we see an issue, if we see an issue, we have, now 68 officers, if we have an issue over there and we see calls for service spike, and we have cars being stolen and complaints about these things, we can make an adjustment.
Right.
I think it's a commercial area, there's places that are open.
Okay, so let me make sure. Right now, the section of, if you would, and I'm really sorry to ask you again, on Indiana, on the east side, from Mariposa to Pine, which is shown at light blue. We're going to extend it all the way on the east side of Indiana, all the way to Holly.
Yes.
Two-hour parking anytime.
Elias, it all goes blue, Elias.
It all goes.
There you go.
Got you, got you. And take out, on the north side of Mariposa, take out the section between Illinois and Kansas.
Yes, yes.
Got it.
And let's make sure we notify people who have those permits about that change. There's probably people who are used to parking there overnight.
Yes, we will, we will, okay.
Does anyone want to move approval of that?
I will move approval.
Giroux on the first.
Is this going to be for one year, by the way?
For one year.
I'm really sorry, one year.
For one year.
Okay, just want to make sure. All right.
Do I need to be a little bit more distinct about what I'm moving?
I think that would be really.
Okay, I am moving to, I guess, extend for one year the pilot program with the following changes. Removal of the permit parking on the north side of Mariposa between Illinois and Kansas. And the second part is, on the commercial side, on the east side of Indiana, to make that two-hour parking all the way down to Holly.
Got it, yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Keldor on the second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Keldor.
Yes.
Councilmember Giroux.
Yes.
Councilmember Boils.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baldino.
Yes.
And Mayor Pimentel.
Yes, S5O.
And Mayor, may I please ask you to get consensus to receive and file the report? We did not do that.
I will ask. Do we have consensus to receive and file, both?
Yes.
Yes, you do.
Not either-or? Councilmember Boils, are you fine receiving?
Yeah, it sounds like you had consensus over there.
We have consensus, consensus I, bless you. All right, we are in.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you, there'll be a quiz later, Elias. All right. Committees, committees, votes, citations? We have none. Reports, Madam Clerk.
Thanks for making tonight so much fun. I would like to congratulate Patricia Harada-Aul. She is the Clerk's records technician, and she just received her certification. She's now a certified municipal clerk. So that's a big deal. And that's it, thank you.
Councilmember Keldor?
Only that, I think, well, not all of us, but most of us, right? I'm trying to remember, attended the Booze Allen Hamilton ribbon cutting last week, and that was great, that office full. My takeaway, something that was said, was that they have people commuting over an hour to intentionally come to the office, that they don't have to, but they want to. So I just thought that that was a complete shift in what we've been hearing, and was interesting to note, but it sounds like people are really happy over there, so that's great. That's all I got.
Councilmember Giroux, nothing from me. Councilmember Boils?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I attended Elder Fest, I think it was Saturday morning, so thank you to Parks and Rec for putting that on, it was nice to honor Bob Moda. The girls' softball team has lost in CF on Saturday, but their home game on Friday was one for the books. They were tied 4-4. It wasn't till the bottom of the ninth with the two-run walk-off that El Segundo won, so that was a great time. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I will be brief today, because I know I run on with these things. Priority item for us, Councilmember Giroux, you were out on Thursday for the COG Board of Directors meeting. There is a $250 million item on that for Inglewood, so I will look, I will circulate a thing to see which one of us can attend. I will get the staff report over.
This Thursday?
This Thursday.
Mayor Protem's going to that.
He's out of town, I'll be.
Oh, you got it? Perfect. Do you have the staff report on that? Yeah, it's a monster, I mean, it's quarter billion dollars. We got a couple paramedics being interviewed, that's good. Sanitation is this week, I won't bore you to death. Cool tour of the Boeing facility, it's amazing to lose track of what we think about all the new satellites and things going on, that there's places that still make gigantic bus-sized satellites right here in the city, which is really impressive. We had a nice Defense Tech Forum at Topgolf run by Fulcrum Venture, and other than that, City Attorney, over to you.
Nothing's eating, thank you.
Nothing's even, thank you.
City Manager?
Yes, uh, Mayor, thank you. Just a quick Hyperion update, like I usually do at meetings. Wanted to update the council and the community on the mosquito concerns that have been, uh, we've received, um, emails regarding this over the last month or so. Hyperion has actually, um, formed a team of maintenance workers and operations staff to, to deal with the issue. They, they are actually walking the entire plant to identify any possible mosquito breeding grounds, um, and take necessary action. For example, any standing water and storm drains, out-of-service tanks would be pumped out using vacuum trucks or portable pumps, so, and they've also sent two of the staffers to, um, classes for, to become certified for applying pesticides if that's necessary. And also, I guess on a positive note, um, the latest mosquito count in the neighborhood from LA County's Vector Control District from May eighth showed lower numbers compared to the reading on May first. So Hyperion is trying to address mosquito issues, uh, as they go through the entire plant, and I'll keep you updated on, on the status of that.
Any updates on the hiring of the plant manager?
Um, yeah, the update is, they have selected a new, a different recruiting firm. The position still is budgeted, even though LA City is going through some difficult budget, uh, issues right now. Our initial contact that we've been working with, Mr. Ryan Jackson, is no longer with them, uh, but now his boss, Randall Winston, who I've met, well, actually had a conversation with, is now taking over, and he's actually, was his boss, so I'm hoping we get more, uh, you know, support and, and, and more immediate action, but they are recruiting again for the position, but don't know how long, I mean, it is still budgeted. AQMD received twenty-seven odor complaints in the last couple of weeks, and they issued one violation for nuisance on May second. And then finally, um, Hyperion, it will be performing electrical testing at its headworks building on Wednesday, well, tomorrow. Uh, this test will help to ensure that the facility is prepared in the event of a loss of power. It's anticipated to take roughly two hours, and during this time, the blowers for the headworks may be offline or operating at partial capacity. The headworks building doors and gates will remain to be shut during this testing, so that was one thing that we did ask for. So overall, you know, we are still in, in constant communication with the staff over there, um, but, you know, no new project man, no new program manager, and, um, and the mosquito issue is, is at least tentatively being addressed.
And City Manager, I will dovetail on that, that, that we had tasked the City Attorney with exploring our options on withdrawing from a billing agreement with Hyperion, uh, and that we were unsuccessful in finding a way through that.
Okay.
All right, and with that, a final note, Monday is Memorial Day, uh, and I would add something that this May twenty-sixth marks the twentieth anniversary of the death of a friend of Chief Rodriguez and I. Rick Crocker was a Marine, Santa Monica Police Department Officer, uh, he died defending a school. So they're not all just names on the wall, sometimes they're close to us, so, Chief?